I'd like to call the meeting of the Hever Township Plan and Commission Order. Regular meeting of Thursday, November 8th, 2018. Lisa, could you call Rawl, please?
Angela.
Here.
Mr. Muir.
Here.
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 Mr. Goodman.
Here.
Okay, thank you. First item on our agenda this evening is the presentation for Republic Bank on the corner of Darby and Eagle Roads. And we have Mr. D'Amico.
Mr. Capuzzi, good to see you.
How are you?
May please the board, yeah, my name's Mark D'Amico, attorney media and representing Republic Bank, which is the equitable owner of the 2400 Darby Road, which is the existing Sharro Gas Station, which you're all familiar with. So, we have been working on this project for many months. In fact, I think we met with Kelly and Laurie back in, like, January to review the plan. So they've had the property under agreement for a long time. So, one of the things that the township really suggested they were, and Commissioner McCloskey was at both, at least two meetings that we had with the township staff. This right-hand turn lane was basically what the township asked us to see if we could get. That was sort of the first thing, I'll give Laurie credit, I don't want to take anything away from Kelly, but Laurie basically said, "Figure out a way to get that in there, we really need it." So we went back and Bob redesigned the site. This is not what we showed them the first time.
That's what we did show them. Behind us, Laurie.
We didn't have a right, we didn't have a right turn lane when we met with her the first time, but that plan was not well received, so we got a right-hand turn lane. And I think Commissioner McCloskey was very much in favor of that as well. So, we made some more refinements, got her satisfied, Commissioner McCloskey seemed satisfied with the plan. We made our application to the zoning hearing board, and then Regina Pfeiffer and her husband entered an appearance in opposition to our application. I don't know if you remember, we never got this far with the Walgreens plan, but you'll remember, we had to go to the zoning here, we probably presented it at planning commission before we went to the zoning hearing board several years ago. In any event, between her and the Katz Pharmacy across the street, there was a lot of opposition to that plan, and if you remember, the zoning hearing board actually granted the relief, and the township commissioners actually entered their appearance in opposition on appeal, along with the Pfeffers, and that sort of killed that project, to be sort of candid. So, Pfeffers came out again, and that was the bad news, but then the good news was the attorney called me and said, "Look, unlike the Walgreens that my clients were diametrically opposed to, we've got some things we'd like to talk to you about, and we think we can come up with a plan, as long as you're willing to make certain changes, that we would, you know, settle our differences and withdraw our opposition and support your application." So, that resulted in the middle of our zoning application with some changes to refine the plan, including some extra buffering along there, and of, actually a fence, because they were concerned that even though we had that closed off with a curb, that somehow that wasn't good enough, so we put a little fence next to the curb. She was very interested in not, even though we have every, our client has every right to access the alleyway along the common property line, in fact, we own to the center line of that alley. They didn't want us to use it, and our client conceded to that, so the curb cut, the two curb cuts are the only two curb cuts for, and I'll let Bob do a little more of the explanation of the plan. But between that, and we agreed to pave the alley, we agreed to, she didn't really like the pylon sign that we were proposing and wanted a monument sign, so we went back and gave her that. There's a couple other things that we agreed to, she wanted to make sure she had some contact in case the landscaping wasn't being maintained. But, long story short, we have resolved our differences with the Pfeffers, and they're supportive of that, of this plan, and the zoning board granted the relief, most notably the drive-through, even though there's a drive-through in every bank along Eagle Road there, that requires relief. So, the zoning hearing board granted us that relief, they agreed with us that a loading space was not required. The existing impervious coverage at the Sharro Gas Station, not surprisingly, is 98 percent, I'm sure that number doesn't surprise you. We're taking it down to 82.4. Code requires 75, as you know, but the zoning hearing board granted us that relief, and just, just to note, the Walgreens plan was 91, so we're moving in the right direction here, we're getting pretty close to 75. We also got some sign relief, that's not shown on the plan, but we did get sign relief. So, Mr. Blue and the folks in his office are diligently working, and we might even be in front of you next month for the actual planning commission review of the land development application. But, in talking to our client at a status conference call earlier this week, he said, "I'd like you to show the planning commission the plan," so it, so they have a little, because it's been out there and they haven't seen it, and I thought that was a good idea, and Kelly was very kind and put us on the agenda. So, I'm gonna have Bob just take a couple minutes, walk you through the site plan, and then you can have at it.
Before you leave, I know your zoning application listed, like, six or seven or eight variance requirements, and from what I saw of the zoning hearing decision, they granted two variances for loading space and for the drive-throughs. What happened with the other variance requests that you originally asked for? Did they drop out during testimony, or?
Yeah, I was actually hoping to have a little more time, because I haven't actually looked at the details of that for a couple of months, but there was a lot of confusion or a lot of gray area. We filed the application and advertised certain things, and by the time we got to the zoning hearing board, we, my testimony was, and I don't have the record, so I didn't have a chance to read it, but, and I'll get you this detail for next month, certainly, but we whittled it down before we got to the zoning hearing board the first time in July. And then the second time, by the time we got there, the second time, as a result of some of the things that the Pfeffers wanted, we were down to even a fewer variances. So, and one of the variances that we asked for was sort of a function of a little bit of confusion about the setback. So, we, and we didn't, and I was confused, because the Walgreens plan didn't have setback relief, and this plan is further setback than the Walgreens, but, in any event, we, so we didn't need setback relief. So, there's a lot of, unfortunately, there was a lot of confusion over what we needed, but we did get, Bob, confident that this, any relief that's required to produce this plan is, was approved by the zoning hearing board.
And, and the only condition that I noticed was that you have to build that right turn lane within 12 months. I think that's the only condition I heard from the zoning board.
Yeah, I, unfortunately, Mr. Capuzzi, I have a file folder for zoning hearing board decision, and I opened it up, and somebody took the zoning board decision out of the file, so I've got it scanned it in our electronic file, but I can't access that from my iPhone. So, yeah, we're certainly gonna build that, that's gonna be part of the, it's gonna be, you know, part of the site work, so it'll, it'll be built and, I assume, operational, you know, when the day the bank opens. All right? Bob, you wanna run them through the site plan quickly?
The, yes, the, the plan that Mark was referring to, we have the rendered copy right, right here. And we went to the zoning hearing board, and some of the changes that occurred at the zoning hearing board is that the neighbors didn't want the pylon, the larger pylon sign, so we ended up with a, more of a monument sign, a three-sided monument sign. Okay, so, do you have that one there, Mark?
I sent that to Kelly, so I don't know.
Here we have it.
That's the same thing that.
Right. Okay, so we ended up with a pylon sign at the intersection, a low ground pylon sign as opposed, monument sign, as opposed to one sticking up in the air, and that's located in the upper right-hand corner. We've lost some parking, parking space in, in this upper right-hand corner, or the northeast corner, and we've added some landscaping both around the sign and more green space. So that's something that came out of that. Again, the, the parking space, locate, there was a parking space along in here, we dropped that out, that gave us more landscaping. We have 28 spaces are now proposed where 16 are required. Our client believes that they need as many parking spaces as they can get as part of their business model. One of the things that Mark had mentioned, that along the, the alley going from upper right to, to lower left, we've added a three-foot-high fence, just to draw people's attention. As, as Mark had said, we have curbing in there, but people, you know, when the snowplows or whatever, they, they lose track of what's going on, so we're putting a fence along that, a low fence. Again, that was part of the negotiations between our client and the next-door neighbor.
Was there any type, specific type of fence that you've agreed to, or they're looking, the neighbors are looking for?
We talked about a picket fence, and we have, we have a detail.
I don't know if the detail specifies the type of fence, but that's what we've got in mind, Angela, the picket fence, and I think the spec is three feet.
Yes.
So it's, it's a solid fence, basically?
It's what?
Solid or pickets spaced?
I think it's more of. Her concern is she wants to create a visual barrier for anybody thinking that they might access the bank through the alley, to sway them of that notion. Explain that there's gonna be a curb, and landscaping, that's what you normally see, and her response was, "Well, I want a fence too." So, we said, "Give you a fence." We had a lot of, there was a lot of discussions, a short amount of time, but a lot of discussion, a lot of work.
Hours.
You know, including a multi-hour meeting at her attorney's office, and at some point he just kind of said.
And they were happy, and they voiced their opinion at the zoning hearing board. We were happy it was over. I mean, it wasn't contentious, it's just a very two-strong people trying to meet in the middle of the road. There's a detail in the lower left-hand corner, that'll all be detailed in greater specificity when we submit the plans in. The other thing is that the building drive-through lanes have been shifted to provide additional space between the new curb and the Bryn Mawr Trust property, which is located along this area here. As you can see, we've got some green space in that area. The drive-through lanes, and this was all approved, the, the drive-through lanes were reduced from nine foot to eight-and-a-half foot. Again, we don't want people running through, you know, at high speeds, and that works for the bank and it worked for the zoning hearing board.
Is there an ATM machine in those drive-through lanes?
I, I don't think so, no.
No, no, there is definitely not.
Okay.
Like, the, they make, we made a big deal of the fact that, Bob, if you want to point them to the vestibule.
Sure.
Or vestibule.
That's this area in here.
So, that area remains accessible 24 hours a day, and that is where they want their customers, they want their customers to be well-lit and not be coming behind the bank. That's their, that's their business model. Park your car, it's well-lit, your card access to get in, front door, lobby where the ATM machine, pay your money and get out.
And handicap parking space was shifted more towards the center in the area, towards the middle of the building. There's a handicap parking space on either side with a crosswalk. We've got directional signs, and this is, was, is important. The impervious coverage was reduced from the July plan to the August plan from 87.2 to 81.4 percent. So we dropped down the impervious coverage by, you know, tightening up the lanes along the drive-through, dropping this one parking space or two up in this area here, in the upper right-hand corner or the northeast corner. So we've got more green space out there now than, than there is presently under the, the gas station.
Bob, you want to go through the access, the driveways and how they're constructed and functioned?
Sure. We have a full access, again, this is all subject to PENDOT, but we do have a traffic engineer onboard McMahon and Associates who has already studied and given us guidance. The north, well, the westly entrance will be full access. We have also an access located in this area right here, I believe that's also full access. Again, everything is subject to the PENDOT permit.
We're expecting that on Eagle, likely what is, that they will not.
Yeah, that's, 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 yeah, that's, I mean, we'd love to have the full access, but it's gonna be, the PENDOT permit says no left end, there'll be no left end.
I have a question regarding the signage.
Yes, sir.
In addition to the pylon that's at the corner, what kind of signage is going to be on the bank? Was that addressed yet?
Just, just for a point of clarification, I know that I also refer to it as a low-lying, it's a monument sign. It's, you know, it's on a, on a brick pier, and then we've got it as opposed to being a 20-foot-high sign. So it's, if, do you have a copy of the, of the sign there?
I did, I saw it.
Okay. So there's, there's various, there's channel letters, letters in the front of the building in this area here, there's.
We'll have a rendering, sorry, we'll have a rendering, but we can come back for land development, we don't have it here tonight, but there is a, essentially, that's the main corner of the bank, and there is a, I don't know if it says R or Republic, but there's a sign on each corner of the, what do they call their entrance? In any event, they have, the architects, they don't just call it a wall, they call it something. But, anyway, there's a R on each, on each corner.
Thank you.
How many cars can line up in queue in that turn lane?
In which, which one, I'm sorry?
Turning right, or the one you've created?
The, the upper, this one up in here?
Yeah.
It's prob, let's see, the, the length is about 100 feet, so maybe five or six.
Are you just cursing?
I mean, it's, you know, I was born and raised in Lansdowne, anything's gonna be better than the way it is right now.
And if we did as much as we, what you're looking at there is a result of, you know, several drafts between McMahon's office and Bob's office, and we had the issue there because of the crosswalk, and you have to have a site distance when you're, when you're exiting, yeah, when you're exiting here, that was a factor, so it was a whole bunch of factors, but, long story short, McMahon was tasked with designing something that would fit as many cars as possible, and that's what we got.
And that signs, like, 10 feet wide and 7 feet high?
This, the monument sign?
Yeah.
Well, instead of guessing, I'll just look at the detail and I'll tell you exactly. It's like it was 11 feet length. It is, the base is 3 feet, and the, the sign itself is 4.6, so it's 7 feet high by 11 feet of the width. It's a big sign.
Yeah.
On, on three sides.
Right. Any concern about seeing around that, cars approaching?
It's outside the, well, first of all, it signifies the intersection, and secondly, it's outside the clear sight triangle. If you look at, if you look at the plan that was given to you, there's a, you'll see that, I probably can't see it on here, but you can see it.
See the dotted lines?
Yeah, the dotted lines are the clear sight triangle, we kept it out of that.
Will you be incorporating the design standards for the Eagle Road corridor into your plans?
As far as the fencing and the.
Thing, benches, all the other things that are required.
Well, our, our client doesn't particularly want to put benches there to, I mean, I, listen, I'm just, I'm the messenger, not the.
Yeah.
You know, they don't want to put the benches, we're gonna spend, you know, a lot, a lot of money on that roadway improvement.
I understand, but, you know, we've asked other people, and they have, you know, done it, to put benches and things like that where we are required, and they're required along that whole corridor.
Right.
The walls, the fences, and the benches and everything else, it's in that, that standard. So when you come back, we'll be looking to see those on there.
And if you look at the YMCA down the other end of Eagle Road, that's kind of the standard where we've established for any new developments within the Eagle Road corridor?
That's, when we first met with Kelly and Laurie and the commissioner, that was, that was brought up to us, so.
Yes.
We're aware of it.
Okay.
No, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I mean, it's a prominent, obviously, it's a very prominent intersection, it's a, you know, it's a, maybe the, the entrance to the Eagle Road corridor, so, yeah, I mean, we'd be expecting a, you know, significant, a good face forward, right?
Sets the language for the rest of the.
Right, absolutely. It's like a gateway, really, to the, to the street, so, yeah, we really should start the language.
And the Y was the other gateway, so that's why they had to do so much, but, yeah.
I mean, we will certainly convey your thoughts to our client.
All about precedent, too, right?
I'm sorry?
All about precedent.
Yeah.
And you will, you will, sorry, you will have the rendering and can tell us a little bit more about the architecture? I mean, I think I've seen Republic Banks, and I think they have a good amount of glass, right?
We didn't even get that far, we had, had something to present to the zoning hearing board, and they weren't frankly, we didn't even, not only even think, spent much time talking about it, but we'll have the renderings, and we'll have, obviously, all the details on the landscaping plan, whatnot, when we come back for land development. And again, we're not asking the planning commission to make any recommendation, we're just here to make sure you're aware of the project, so you're not surprised. Hopefully, next month when we're back, or worst-case scenario, maybe after that, but.
And including the standards will be the lighting, too, what they look like, and they should match the lights the rest of the way down the street.
Yeah, absolutely, and that was one of the things that we agreed with the Pfeffers with, is that we wouldn't ask for any waivers from the lighting, in other words, they want to make sure the lighting is low as possible and damp casted.
And the look, too, is important, this.
The lighting, that's not part of what she's concerned about.
Yeah, we're, we're concerned about it matching what we're doing down the rest of the way to the street.
Right.
Are they the ornamental lights?
Yeah, if you go to the Y, you'll see exactly what we're.
I'll be going that way, so.
It's, it's the streetlights, and they match certain visual characters, you know, that we want to maintain.
Have you done any preliminary investigations on possible contaminated soils?
Yes.
And?
Waiting for the report.
Well, I can tell you that there is a protocol, I, I'm not the transaction lawyer for Republic Bank, but there is a property that's been the subject of environmental investigations, I don't know if it's better, but it probably is. Anyway, the long, long story short, the seller has benefited, the owner of the property has benefited by an indemnification from a large public company, predecessor entitled. So they need to be careful about how we develop the site to make sure that their indemnification doesn't get screwed up. So, I can only tell you that there are a couple different parties, one, our client, who has a environmental problem, and two, the owner, and three, this large oil company, that all have a stake in making sure the grading work for this property and removal of the existing storage tanks. Not the problem, that was something from a long time ago. Don't get screwed up.
Will there be a basement?
We actually have, these plans actually have to get submitted and approved by the owner of the property.
And I, I would imagine that since you're basically redoing that corner of the intersection, you may or may not have to do some remedial work on the opposite two corners as far as your crosswalks go. It wasn't that long ago, within the last year or two, that those corners were all upgraded for curb-cut ramps and things like that, and since you're moving that, that corner, is that traffic signal there impacted by?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, you're gonna have crosswalks that, that probably have to be redone to some degree, and possibly two corners opposite your property may have some remedial work that has to be done. But it's something, I guess, that you'll vet out with PENDOT once you get through that, go through that process.
Traffic engineer will give us the, the direction that they want us to follow as far as that.
And, and we will bring our traffic engineer.
Okay. The, the other, the other concern would be, in the evening, traffic on Darby Road backs up quite a distance from, from, from this intersection back almost up to Armore Avenue sometimes, you know, at peak hour. And if you have anybody coming across Segal Road from the, I'll say, the south, and then wants to make a left turn into that driveway, they're gonna have to wait for someone to give them a courtesy gap. If they don't, they're just gonna back up traffic that comes through that intersection, and there's not a whole lot of distance in there. I would suspect that it would be prudent to install some type of signage that says "Do not block intersection." To the degree that works, great, but generally, they don't work that well. But anyhow, that's something I think that, that your traffic engineer needs to take a look at, the queuing situation along that stretch of Darby Road for someone who might be wanting to make a left turn into the site. Unless PENDOT feels that left turn shouldn't be permitted there.
We'll find out. Bang, don't block intersection.
Chuck, you have anything you would like to ask?
I don't think so at this time. I think you're also gonna have some signal improvements in that intersection, too, is that correct? When it comes to.
It's really, Chuck, you know, whatever PENDOT tells us, we have to do.
Like.
We have to relocate, you know, the southwest corner, that signal, we're gonna have to extend the mast arms, that type of thing, I don't know whether we're running a new controller or not.
Yeah, the controller box, I believe, is on that corner, too, isn't it?
The sign's gone.
I think so. I think it is.
Okay. Okay, I don't have anything else.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question? Okay.
All right, well, we appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming in.
We'll be back soon.
Oh, one other thing, check the code, but I don't know that open space applies to land developments less than an acre.
Well, do.
So we, if we save you 25 grand because of that, then, you know, maybe we can get those Eagle Road improvements.
That's, that won't.
But it depends who's, who's pocketbook you're looking at. My client would say, "Well, now, now I'm just a little less in the hole for all the work I'm doing on PENDOT."
Yeah.
But he still keeps asking me why the township isn't paying.
But they're not suggestions, they're part of the requirements for the area, those improvements. We'd expect them, if I could, anything else.
And as far as the Darby Road corridor?
Right.
Yep, understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're gonna be back in with Bryn Mawr Medical also.
Great.
Great.
Thank you for the turn.
That's tall, that. Thanks a lot, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
At least they're parking to Brickenbrook, like Bryn Mawr is doing.
Right.
That could be some more income. That's gonna be a hopping corner soon.
Okay, we have, let's skip down to item number three, since Kelly is occupied. Chuck, I assume you're gonna present the preliminary final minor subdivision plan?
Yeah, I was just wondering why you. Does everybody have that plan, or do you need it? I have a few extra copies.
We have it in front of us.
All right, you've seen this before, last, last meeting, okay? This is a preliminary final minor subdivision plan for 599 Glendale, it's a township property, it, it housed the old recreational facility down there, no longer obviously needed with this building. Township would like to sell the. Township would like to sell the property because they have no need for it. So they asked us to do a sketch plan and a subdivision plan to, you know, figure out the best, the best route to sell this and everything. And this is basically an advanced iteration of what you saw last time. This has a lot more information on it. There's some steep slopes, there's utilities. We have defined the front and side and rear yards and all that, and, and added some notes and everything with regard to the planning requirements that are necessary. So, again, let me just get back here. So we're going to end up with subdividing this 2.4 acre property, which is the rectangle, basically, into four lots. There's an existing, the existing lot would be the township lot, okay? That's about 1.58 acres. And then there's three residential lots, assuming that there's a zoning change that goes along with it, obviously. Assuming that that goes through, that would be R4, divided into three lots. 9,000 square feet, roughly 9,000 square feet on these two.
Have a nice Thanksgiving.
Again. Take care. 9,000 square feet on the first two. The third one over there is 18,000 square feet. And I know you had a comment on that last time with regard to the frontage and everything, and there is some logic behind that, all right? The reasoning being with the steep slopes encumbering this, this property here, the footprint to build on outside that steep slopes is similar to what these other two are. So that was the reason for making that a little larger, so that applicant wouldn't have to go back to the zoning hearing board for steep slope disturbance and all that. So that was the whole logic behind that, okay? The other question you guys had last time was street frontage on, on the lot one there, the open, the township parcel. There is no requirement for street frontage on ROS, although there is a front yard, but there is no requirement for a street frontage.
We also talked about possibly making that 15 feet by instead of 10 feet by?
Yes. We left it at 10 feet right now. That was the minimum requirement, just to keep, you know, not encumber that lot too much, but if you guys want to change to 15, then it's...
You're, I mean, you're really not losing much of a building area if you did move that over five. I'm just thinking in the future, if someone decides they wanted to try to put a walkway up there, it gives them a little more room to construct it.
Certainly do that, it's a minor change.
The, I'm sorry.
Okay. Utility wise, there's sanitary coming down the unopened area of Bon Air. It runs over to Glendale, so that, that is available to all these lots, okay? And there's water main on there also. Access is on the state highways, you know, so there's no, the applicant would be required to, to go get their own PennDOT permit.
Are there, I mean, from a site distance standpoint for future driveways, we got clear site distances for all three lots in both directions?
There's probably some, if I recall, there's some trees along there down through that area. I'll tell you right now, the oak, the existing driveway for the recreational facility has got decent site distance, okay? So I don't, I don't see these two being an issue. The third one, there might be some site distance problems down there that have to be resolved.
And you mentioned that there's one EDU available because of the existing building and that the township is in the process of getting approval for two more EDUs, I assume.
Correct.
Okay. I did not notice any indication that the boundary lines are going to be pinned? I think if the township is considering selling these as residential lots, that it would be important for them to put the corner points in so that whoever buys the property knows, number one, that they have a lot and that it's defined. And also, has the township, do you know if they've decided whether or not to sell these as three lots in one sale or individual lots, three different sales?
They have not decided what to do with that yet.
Okay. I think it makes it all more important to have those properties pinned or monumented, whatever the ordinance requires. Kelly, did township send out notices to adjacent property owners?
Indeed, we did, and I believe we have one in the audience.
You did or did not?
Did.
Okay, okay, good. Anyone on the board have any other questions?
I have a question, just out of curiosity. What are the expectations for the proposed lot number one?
The expectations?
I mean...
Open space.
Yes.
Yep.
It's going to stay open space.
It's going to stay open, open space, yes. There's no intention, the township has to do anything with that at all, other than what it is today.
I saw that, you know, there's, there are some setbacks defined, and I, I was just curious why.
Yeah, we struggle with putting setbacks on there or not because it was meant to show that something could go there, but there's absolutely no intention at all in township to put anything there.
It's pretty much all steep slopes, right? It's all wooded?
Well, it's primarily wooded, yeah.
Yeah, so, construction in there would be difficult.
I mean, will it be marked or advertised or named as something that the community could use or, or not encouraged, or they won't be encouraged, anybody to use it, or?
Well, again, it's going to remain what it is now. You know, it's, the other park is up here, you know? You have Steel Road Field, which is, is not far from here and everything, so, and a lot of people use this already sort of as a trail up through there. So I don't know that there's any intention to formally name it or do anything like that at this point.
Hey, I see we have a local resident. Come up, your name and address for the record, please.
Everybody, my name is, my name is Brian Doherty, and I am the property owner here at 1510, 1510 Steel, and I own about three, about three, and three, three and a half acres. That comes all the way out, all the way out over to here. So my property adjoins this, this open space here, and I have a big, a big lawn area as well as a lot of wooded area that I own. My, my concern is to, as you were just speaking of, what is going to be of the open space? And what is the purpose for the 10 or possibly 15 foot public access here? I see another drawing from the past that, that showed the public access here, which is, which I know is Bon Air Road, which is a paper road of, where the sewer runs down and the road was never built. And I saw before the public access along this road, but now I see the public access here. And my concern is that this is, this is a beautiful wooded area that has a few trails and it's a very natural area. My concern is, what is the need for the public access here? Are we looking to draw people into this space and have people occupy that space? I have, like I said, a very large, three acre, three acre property here, and more often than, than I would like, I find people in, in my backyard thinking that it is some sort of open space, public, and it is not. So I'm concerned that having this open space, if the open space remain, remains as, as it's always been, I don't, I have no problem with that. If we're now going to name this as some special, you know, open space property and encourage people to go there, I might have a problem with that. When I moved here about seven years ago, this open space was, there was teenagers that came there every Friday and Saturday night and drank beer, and there was broken, broken glass and sofas and things that I have cleaned up. And, and I, I have three kids and there's about 15 kids in the neighborhood, and they really, they really like to, like to play in there, and I like them not to play in, you know, old sofas that were drug from the trash from somewhere else and beer bottles and things of that nature. So that's my concern.
And as the township engineer mentioned, I don't think the township has any specific plans for that area that it'll remain as is. The, I think, Chuck, you mentioned there is an existing trail that along the old, or the right of way for Bon Air that people use?
It's not, it's not a, this is a formal trail.
It's just a walking trail. Part of it is actually on mine and my neighbor's property, which is fine, we don't have a problem with that. It's just a beaten path in the woods. People walk their dogs and ride their bikes and things like that down there, and that's fine.
I can't imagine that by putting these lines on a drawing, people, it's going to change people's attitudes as far as using that property.
My concern is for this area here, this 10 or 15 foot area, what is the, is there going to be a fence and a sign and walking, you know, walk up here, or is it just going to remain woods and sticker bushes and trees like it, like it is now? That's my concern.
The intent of this whole project here is to sell this property.
I understand.
It's not to do anything to what exists today to the open space.
Okay.
Okay, that's all.
There's not going to be any walks to encourage people to use that side.
Because there had been in the past, I don't know the, the people's name or the name of the group, but in the past, it was a couple of years ago, they had put like mulch down the trail and, and, you know, they did it on the other side of Glendale Road where they put like, you know, logs on the side and made like a walking trail, which is fine for, you know, for people to walk their dogs and things like that, but I just don't want to encourage teenagers and drug users and people like that to come and, you know, make up camp in, in the woods and, because they're not just, they're doing all kinds of things that I wouldn't like them to do. I'm sure you, nobody else would like them doing their backyard.
It remains the way it is, it's okay?
If it remains as beautiful woods and open space, which there's not much left, that...
That 15 foot line, if it stays the way it is, that's okay?
That's okay with me, yes.
So was, was there, I'm sorry, was there a plan to put a curb cut and make it an access road for township trucks to get up there and do any kind of maintenance, or that was not the plan?
No, that was definitely not a plan.
Okay.
It's just going to be a paper line that no one will know about.
I don't think there's any maintenance required on that area.
Right, there's not like grass, right?
Something maybe.
Sure, it's, it's completely raw, you know, woods that's, that've been there, there's nothing, you know, there is some, some trails and I have a little golf cart and me and my kids drive around with the golf cart and we, you know, we have, we have a lot of fun on the weekends and I'm not, you know, just looking at, hopefully that it would, it would stay that way.
If the township, if the township did need to get access, they can use the Bon Air trail?
You could, you could drive a truck if you needed to all the way down that Bon Air Road. It's a little overgrown, but very, very measly, you could, you could drive all the way down there.
The reason for the access strip is you cannot create a lot that doesn't have some type of street frontage.
Sure. Technically have street frontage on your road.
I guess you, you could argue that, although it's not an improved road, there's no real street there, there's a right of way there. So I, I think the prudent thing as far as the township's concerned is we have, we meet the township zoning code by providing that, that access strip out to Glendale Road.
Okay.
Okay.
I also may just elaborate on that. That was, this property was, was purchased 30 years ago via grant from DCNR, and that was a requirement of the grant, that there would be some type of access from, from Glendale Road.
Okay.
So if that requirement wasn't there, it wouldn't be there.
Okay. My other area of concern is I know there's been talk of putting a footbridge across on the Minola Road over here where the railroad bridge used to be years ago, and I, somebody had said, I don't know if this is truth or not, that of potentially putting one across there to connect the Darby Creek Trail to this trail and all that kind of stuff. Is there any plan or any talk, has anybody ever heard anything about that? Might have all just...
Never.
Never heard anything like that.
No.
All right.
That we're aware of.
That's a, that's, yeah, okay. I remember the, the train bridge I used to walk, over there going to walk into school. Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Chuck. Is there something you would like us to do?
Yes. I was going to let Kelly go ahead first, but, you know, absolutely, we'd like to, a recommendation from Planning Commission, sure, as to move this forward so the board could act on it.
Make a motion to approve?
Okay, I'll, I'll second the motion.
It's the 15 foot right of way, correct?
Right.
The suggestion that the Board of Commissioners consider increasing the width of the right of way to the lot one from 10 feet to 15 feet. Lisa, could you call Roll, please?
Mr. Rouska? Mr. Kafuzi?
Yes.
Mr. Riordan?
Yes.
Mr. Fierdamanda?
Yes.
Mr. Goomin?
Yes.
Mr. Point?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll jump back to item number two, which is the zoning map amendment that allows all this to happen.
Get in the time machine.
And I believe Kelly Clerk is, Kirk is going to give our presentation to us.
All right, so in order to do this subdivision, we need to do some zoning changes from what is currently zoned as ROS, which is recreational open space, to R4, which is a medium to load, or, I'm sorry, medium density residential. All the lots meet, actually far exceed the requirements for lot sizes. And, you know, I think everything was pretty well covered during the subdivision portion of this, but does anyone have any questions or comments?
Has, have you, is this going to the Delaware County Planning Commission yet?
It has. We have not received a comment yet.
Okay, and there's a public hearing that'll be held?
Scheduled, I believe, for December 3rd.
That's with the Board of Commissioners?
Prior to the Board of Commissioners' work session.
So you need the Planning Commission's recommendation for the zoning change. Okay. Anyone have any more questions about that?
Nope. You know, for the record, it's R4 everywhere else, so we're really essentially filling in.
Except for across the street where it's also ROS. Pretty, pretty simple choice there.
Right.
I recommend that we make the zoning changes.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded. Lisa, could you call Roll again, please?
Mr. Kafuzi?
Yes.
Mr. Riordan?
Yes.
Mr. Fierdamanda?
Yes.
Mr. Goomin?
Yes.
Mr. Point?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. The final item on tonight's agenda is review of minutes. And I assume these are the minutes from May? Which was a meeting that was held. It was a sketch plan presentation by the school district for the Linwood, new Linwood Elementary School project, but there were only three of us?
Subcommittee meeting.
A subcommittee meeting, okay. So I was here, so I'll make a motion, we approve those minutes?
Second.
And, you weren't here?
Yeah.
Okay. Two of the three are here, so, how do you vote? Jesse, aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So those minutes are approved, two to zero with one abstained. Okay, there being no other business, our next meeting is December 3rd, 13th? Okay, December 13th is our next meeting, and I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved?
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.